Second final reading of ordinance 2020-02-01 establishing a process for the issuance of a citation and applying to Union Pacific for blocking the Fifth Street intersection.
Go ahead, motion.
Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
One second.
Okay, there's a second now, questions?
I wanted to know about moving seven, so we can talk maybe if you can talk about it a little more to the audience, that is question this evening, give us some information that you've given us in the previous couple of meetings.
So you would just have to request that it be removed.
Yeah.
I mean, is that okay or?
Yeah.
You can, you can, you can request.
I'd like to request that it's removed.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all any questions on that? All who's in favor of removing it, discuss it later.
We don't need to vote on that.
We don't need to vote, we just take it out there.
Only a single council member just has to request.
Okay, then we're gonna go ahead and vote on items one through six. All who's in favor, raise your right hand. opposed, like sign.
In favor.
Okay. You want to bring it up?
Just, yeah, information and discussion.
Okay, okay, we'll go ahead and we're gonna.
We're action items, I guess.
You gotta, you gotta make that.
Mayor, that will be moved to first.
Item.
Yeah.
Okay, we're moving item seven to item eight.
No, sir, to the action item.
To the action items?
Yes.
Okay. And so we have no information or discussion items, then, then action items to be accommoded by brief statement of facts, include where funds are coming from if applicable. Action items limit up to ten per meeting, being called upon by the mayor or mayor pro temp. Citizens are required to state their name and report to the city design. Priority will be given to the citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live or own business or property in the city of Alpine will be allowed to speak in the state management.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, first item is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action on the second and final reading of ordinance 2020-02-01 establishing a process for the issuance of a citation and applying to Union Pacific for blocking the Fifth Street intersection is council, Councilman Stevens, item. Counselor, would you like to address anything?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Having been involved in this discussion as long as I've been on council and having spoken with UP when I first came on council, there's clearly been a change in perspective of Union Pacific, so we have in fact had the discussions. It's my opinion that approval of ordinance gives us the opportunity to go with something specific in hand as opposed to the discussions that frankly have dawned on, have been unanswered, and have been totally unsuccessful. So in my view, this provides us leverage for the discussion. It does not require that we go forward and sue Union Pacific, but in my view, starts the leverage of the discussion, which even the mere fact that this is on the agenda as a listener calls from Union Pacific specifically to me on Friday about, A, we'd like to sit down and have a discussion. So in my opinion, it's the right thing to go do, and on that basis, I would make the motion that we approve the second and final reading of ordinance 2020-02-01.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, any discussion?
I just wanted to. Counselor, I know you'd ask some of my conversation, I'll give you some reflections over the last four months. Reached out to Union Pacific with Chief Martin, who's here, David Hale, and spoke with their public relations person in early December, along with their police department head, discussed with them the agreement from 1998, and at that juncture, what they shared with us is they were concerned about the safety and the lighting of their conductors getting off on the east side of the intersection. So we asked them if we were able to better understand what they meant by safety and lighting, and if they could provide us that in writing, we would be glad to meet, you know, or at least contemplate meeting those requirements. They were set to get back with us in a couple of weeks, did not happen, so had to reach back out to them in early part of January, and the response at that point was, well, we're not gonna provide you any of that. Our people are gonna park on the west side, and that's that. So it's very hard to negotiate any sort of arrangement locally when they're very strident, and they did put that in writing to us and said, hey, we're gonna park on the, on the west side, and that's that. As Counselor Stevens noted, and we, as we had discussed in the last council meeting, when we went out to that rail conference, several retirees from UP, as well as several people in the industry that we talked to that are familiar with Alpine and familiar with this issue, their recommendation to all of us was, was put an ordinance in place. That's what will get them to the table and get them start discussing. And voila, now that the ordinance is out there, we actually have more people coming in the community and discussing, and we're getting more traction with UP. It's up to council to determine, you know, longer term, if we wanted to pursue any sort of litigation with them. But I think most importantly, this is just the next step to getting UP to really talk with us about a solution.
So the council knows some other experience in another city that recently enacted an ordinance to find UP to blocking the main downtown intersection for more than five minutes. It resulted in UP saying, you can't do that to us, but it also resulted in about 20 tickets that went to municipal court. And it resulted in the conductors and the engineers and the lawyers from UP having to come to municipal court several times, and they didn't like that. And nobody had to sue, and nobody had to go to federal court, nobody had to hire expensive Houston lawyers, but the end result is that the crew change area in that city is now moved out of the city. And before, Union Pacific was saying, no, we gotta move it, we gotta do the crew change in the middle of town. So there's ways, you know, just like the city manager's saying, you get their attention, and then suddenly they, they finally start paying attention to the needs of the community.
Any discussion? Yes, just out of curiosity, who was involved in the initial, I guess, discussions or negotiations with UP regarding this issue from the city? Is that you and?
Chief Martin and David Hale are building officials.
I can see some merit in ordinance as a leverage or means to get UP to the, back to the table and negotiate, but it seems to me like we should be a little bit more open and, and just go back and go to base, that's been mentioned before, and sit down with them and just work it out, you know? And I'm sure you can, you can give up to that point without having to any further escalation of ordinances, and then may, may want to come up with something else, and it'll, it'll just get out of, out of hand, which I think right now is the best thing is good faith, go back to the table and, and continue the discussion.
And I'm gonna agree with that because, I mean, UP's been here for a number of years and they've cooperated, and it was through talk instead of fight, I mean, any type of litigation. Also, they contribute to the community, to the terrible organizations here in town. I'm just afraid if we go into litigation, it's gonna cost the city a lot of money, and is it worth while? So maybe you're right, you know, it might get their attention, but I think we need to sit down as council before we go to litigation. Is it worth the cost?
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
Well, number one, we don't know if we're gonna go to litigation to begin with, but I have a big concern about this because in 2016, my father was in full cardiac arrest on the south side of the track, and it took the 20 minutes to get across, and they were in the process of doing CPR the whole time they were there. I mean, I was lucky that my father was able to survive that, but had he not had 20 minutes, we would have been on the other side in the ambulance coding full code. So that, that, it's happened, it's happened before, it can happen again, you know, and, and it's like Ahmet said, they've been getting off on the east side for the last, what, 40 years? When did Dr. Lockhart try to move this railroad across the mountain? They've always sat on the other side of the track. So they had this agreement in 1998, so why all of a sudden the change?
Well, see, that's my question. Why, 'cause up until about a month ago is when I found out that they were parking all the way across. Every time I saw them, they were parked on the other side.
The train has an engine in the front, an engine in the middle, and an engine at the end of the thing just to be able to get it. It takes them going uphill, that train moves about a minute a mile to be able to just get across town.
It does, it slows down. I mean, I go from Neville Haynes to Carrow to Pitt, to Seven, and then sometimes I have to go to Eleven before I get my daughter to school. So she goes late. The principal can tell quite often. It doesn't matter what time of the day they're there, we just, and instead of them speeding up, they slow down, so then we have people going back the other way because they think that Neville Haynes is gonna be open by that time, but it's not. The train is longer.
And the train has actually implemented what they call positive train control, which has tremendously slowed down the trains, and they're three times the size they were before, you know, and I just don't wanna have to have a repeat of my father coding again on the south side and not being able to get him, to help him.
In response to that, thank God that it was easy to get across and into the hospital in time. But it brings up a point, how often has it happened where we have life-threatening or law enforcement situations that this has been a problem? Because as, as it was mentioned a while ago, if law enforcement or the ordinance can't get across on Fifth Street, they can easily backtrack to Seventh Street when the train is coming from east-west, or if it's coming from west-east, and they, if Fifth Street is blocked off, then you still have, what's the other street?
You don't have Seventh Street because once it passes Fifth, the train's gone halfway past the depot, and they automatically go, go down on Seventh Street.
Seventh Street also?
And I've been in healthcare before, and in 19, in 2009 I came here, there was several incidents where the ambulances were coming from South Worcester County and could not get across because of the train. I mean, it wasn't just my father's situation, I used to hear it at work all the time.
I'll call for the question. Okay, all who's in favor of the ordinance, raise your right hand. Opposed? Like sign? Did you raise your hand, which way?
Yeah, we so did.
Okay, we'll do this again. All who's in favor of the ordinance, raise your right hand. Opposed? One.
So four, four, four one?
You're four.
Four.
Okay, four one.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, item nine one is discuss, consider and take appropriate action to adopt resolution 2020-02-10, authorizing the city of Alpine Police Department to participate in the Office of Governor's Homeland Security, State Security Program. It's a grant program that we use to help offset extra hours and overtime. Would you have to have permission, Council, to participate?
Yes. Would you be okay, think?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I propose that the city council adopt resolution 2020-02-10, authorizing the Alpine Police Department to participate in the Office of the Governor's Homeland Security Program.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made in second, any discussion? Chief. Okay, all who's in favor, raise your right hand.
Yes, question.
Okay.
Could maybe Chief or Eric elaborate a bit more on the, what is the Governor's Homeland Security, State Security Program?
So the Homeland Security Grants are used primarily for drug, you know, drug trafficking or immigration support, especially in your western part of the state where you're a little bit more rural, need support for, I guess, the immigration, Customs Board of Patrol, also the drug trafficking. And what it does is, especially in the more remote counties, allowing officers to work a little extra, work overtime, or maybe you have a staff with some, some reserve officers or part-time officers that a city or a county has a limited budget, then this helps supplement that budget. We have to provide reports to them as specified in the grant about everything from seizures to hours worked to, to things that we notice, so.
So dependent upon the reports that we provide, then they assess whether there is a need for additional spending or?
In the future, yes, they address their grant programs every year, so.
How much funding are we talking about?
What do you think in overtime, about $50,000 a year, is that?
That's, that's what we figured on this one. We didn't want to go too much over, so we figured it at about 5% over.
We, we don't try to ask for more than, than what we're gonna use, and we do have to give the specific reporting back to the agency, otherwise we don't get reimbursed for those dollars.
Up to date, have, have we benefited, has the city benefited from funding from these sources, or?
I don't know if this was one of the grants that the city had applied for in the past. I'm not sure about that, but I, one thing I would like to say is, in just the month of January, we had over eighty, I'm sorry, 60 cases that we filed through the department, and the majority of those cases are felony drug cases. So we spent a lot of time on working the narcotics center.
And does that add in my work?
And when Marcy, yeah, and when Marcy joined our team last month, Marcy Tuck is the grants administrator, she immediately sat down with, with Chief, with Captain La Soya, and looked at, like, the JAG grant, which will be later on the agenda, that's something we had used in the past, but she also looked at some of the other grant dollars out there to help us supplement.
Yes, sir.
I think the question on the table is an appropriate one for these first four items on the agenda, just from the clarification standpoint, this is about, I'm looking to, for Eric to confirm or deny, before Chief, these are monies we're gonna spend, they have the ability to have matching funds from the state, and so we already have it in our budget that council has already approved, it's a way to get 100% or half those costs covered by the state. In my view, it's free money from the state, and that's why I support the resolution.
Yes, thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, all who's in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Okay. Honorable Mayor, City Council, item two is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action to adopt resolution 2020-02-11, authorizing the city of Alpine Police Department to participate in the Office of the Governor's Justice Assistant Grant, the JAG grant.
Okay, so a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I propose we approve resolution 2020-02-11, authorizing the Alpine Police Department to participate in the Office of the Governor's Justice Assistant Grant.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made in second, any discussion? Seeing none, all who's in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, item three is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action to adopt resolution 2020-02-12, authorizing the city of Alpine Police Department to participate in Operation Border Star program.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I propose the city council approve resolution 2020-02-04 about the, well, the city of Alpine Police Department to participate in the Operation Border Star program.
I'll second.
Motion's made in second, any discussion?
Same question as before, what is the Operation Border Star program?
Yeah, the Border Star program is, is specific on the border, it's through the Homeland Security as well, on the local border security program, so county like Brewster that is border with, with a foreign country, looking at the immigration coming through, working back with CBP on initiatives to help thwart illegal crossings. And we do have different stops that occur here within the city itself, I know Chiefs every month got multiple stops.
Ten.
Ten, at least ten, and so this helps us offset those dollars that we're spending because beyond just making the stop, right, it's doing all the reporting and working back with the other agencies too.
So it sounds like it's a relevant information assessment initiative whereby the, the city conducts its apprehensions, they, they write up the information, they send it out wherever, and they keep tabs of what, what the needs may be for this section of the country, and the hopeful prospect of getting funding in the future, yeah?
Yes.
Not, but no, no idea as to how much funding?
We request a specific dollar amount based on the hours that we project each, each month that will associate with this program. Really, what, what happens is that this resolution then allows us to go out and apply for those dollars, and then we get awarded afterwards.
And I can ask, have we received any funding?
In years past, yes.
How much, or less?
We get roughly $50,000 to $70,000 a year, which is, which is an important offset to our, our police budget.
Any more, any more discussion? All who's in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, item four is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action to adopt resolution 2020-02-13, authorizing the city of Alpine Police Department to participate in the Department of Justice COPS hiring program. This particular program's a little different. When Chief Martin and I, both Captain La Soya had gone out to Brown Rock separately, Police Chief Banks, Alan Banks, city of Brown Rock, he's used these grants, both in Texas and New Mexico, and they, they offset roughly 70% of cost of hiring new officers. And so, like, right now, we've got a couple openings on staff, as we, as we, if we can cover 70% of that wage, that allows us to repurpose those dollars additionally, you know, back into the department.
Okay, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve resolution 2020-02-13, authorizing the Alpine Police Department to participate in the Department of Justice.
Is a community operation oriented policing services program, which, as the city manager just said, covers the majority of the costs oriented towards make sure our police departments out in the community, so we repurpose dollars for other police matters.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made in second, any discussion? Seeing none, all who's in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Any deal?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, item five is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action to approve the first reading of ordinance 2020-02-04, establishing the regulation of skill or pleasure coin-operated machine establishments, providing definitions, establishing authority to enforce, provide a penalty clause, providing for subrogability clause, and providing for publication. This will specifically address the different coin-operated businesses that are, are starting in our community. This particular ordinance, Crane has adopted a very similar one recently, and through Captain La Soya's discussion with them, Chief Martin's discussion with them, it, it gives us better oversight. This ordinance was included in your packet, this would be the first reading.
Need a motion?
I move that we take.
Mr. Mayor, I propose.
It's okay. Go.
Hold on, Maria was on it.
You got it, Maria.
Okay, I move that we take action to approve the first reading of the ordinance 2020-02-04, establishing the regulation of skill or pleasure coin-operated machine establishments, providing definitions, establishing authority to enforce, providing a penalty clause, providing for subrogability clause, and providing a publication. I'll second that.
Okay, motion's made in second, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious, what are examples of pleasure coin-operated machine establishments?
The primary example that we see are the game machines that pop up, so game of skill or game of chance.
It's not gambling, right? It's like a game, right?
It's, they are approved at the state level, right, so they have to have the state tag on them. The state allows the cities to provide ordinances for greater oversight plus fee collection based on, on those machines.
Do we have any in operation now?
Yes, three different establishments.
Three.
Maria?
I would have include McDonald's where they're scratch it, that's a game.
The, so the scratch-off things that you'll see, that you can buy at convenience stores, those are different, those aren't addressed in this particular ordinance.
I would refer to McDonald's because they have a little scratch it also.
But these are coin-operated.
Okay, all coin-operated machines.
More now they push buttons.
Okay.
My last question on this is, how does the, the city benefit from having these coin-operated entertainment machines?
How does the city benefit?
How do we benefit? Sales tax?
Well, yeah, the, the fees associated with them, so there's registration fee, and then there's a monthly fee for each unit that's out there. And because there are games of chance, I mean, you always, Chief Martin probably articulate this better than me, but whenever you have games of chance or things of that nature, if you have law enforcement presence, it certainly is beneficial for the businesses around or the community around, because sometimes, you know, somebody were to go in there and lose some money, right, they might become frustrated, and it's just good to have oversight and know where these are being operated. There's also provisions relative to proximity to schools, proximity to public parks and establishments of that nature.
And the establishments per se are, I guess, are considered business, business oriented or related, so they have to have a special business operating license?
Yes.
Registered by the city or?
The, the ordinance calls out the provision for them to come in and fill out an application, they pay an application fee. Then what we also do as a city with this ordinance in place is we're inspecting those machines monthly. So then there's a fee that they pay monthly, we go and inspect, make sure they're certified at the state level, so they're not bringing in uncertified machines. in uncertified machines. They're bringing in certified machines. And, and we're matching those numbers back up to what has been authorized at the state level.
So these machines are coming in anyway, right?
Right now, yes.
And now with this, you're having a better way to regulate what's, what's coming in and make sure that it's all legal.
Make sure it's legal, absolutely, because if, if a machine has not been certified by the state, we don't want that machine to be here in, in our community.
You mentioned there are periodic inspections of the machines. Do we have people staff who are qualified to do inadequate inspection, and if so, who are they, who does it?
So David Hale is capable of inspecting, and Chief Martin is capable of inspecting as well.
One of the things, it's gonna give us-
Can we talk to Chief so we can hear you, please?
Okay. One of the things this ordinance will do is give us better control on regulating what machines are in place, being sure that they're certified through the state. In reference to churches and schools, they have to be so many people away from them. Another thing is the age of the participants that go in to utilize the machines. I believe the ordinance was 21, age of 21. Tobacco usage, and I believe we're gonna go by the TABC laws as far as the alcohol. So, you know, there's, it gives us more control on, at any time during, we can also say what business hours they can be open, okay? So it just gives us a lot more control of what's in our city and what's going in there and using the machines.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, all who's in favor. Motion's been made, second. Is there a, a vote on it? All who's in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, last action I have tonight is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action on accepting racial profiling report by Alpine Police Department. Chief Martin, that was included in your packet. It's a good report, and we do have to accept that annually.
I will move that we accept the racial profiling report by Alpine Police Department. I'll second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Chief, you wanna talk about?
Yes, sir. This is required report that every department across the state of Texas has to have turned in by March the first. This generated a lot of work to put this report together because of, part of the reporting system was in our COPS system, and the way the department did it before they went to COPS was on a card. So there was approximately 800 and something cards I had to go through to obtain all this information. It took me a couple of days. Well, actually, I postponed it from one city council meeting to present it because I did not have everything counted yet. So there's the numbers that I will be submitting and approved by council. And have any questions on the numbers?
It's a lot of work.
It was, hopefully next year's gonna be a lot easier.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, one of the things that, that I actually thought was to note on that, and it speaks to what, what our team tries to do, when, when they make a stop, you see 590 verbal warnings, 267 citations. We're not just out there writing tickets, we're actually trying to encourage the citizens and community to follow the law. So I think that's, that's an important number that I look at a lot. We don't ever put quotas or anything out there. We're really trying to help residents and community to do the right thing.
Does this apply to law, law enforcement?
Yes. All, DPS, everybody. Every agency has to submit this report by March first or they will be penalized to the state. And, and with this being said, you know, the report, as you see there, it's verbal warnings, written warnings, written citations, citations and arrests. This has to be documented. Race, everything has to be documented. So everything we do, every traffic stop has to be documented. And also, it's audio, videotaped. There's kind of double with audio, video, and we have to put it in our COPS system that logs every traffic stop. So that way, at the end of the year, we can get a more accurate count.
How, what's your perspective on being satisfied, not satisfied, or acceptable with the numbers on here regarding racial profiling?
With the information that I was given and shown, this was how the prior chief did it, with that information and then the two months that, when I took office in November, this is the only, this is all the documentation I have to generate this report. So I wanna believe that it's accurate as can be, is that we have everything documented and followed the law like the department should have in the past. So I feel that it should be pretty, it is pretty accurate, as accurate as we can be.
Any more? That's it. Thank you very much. Okay. All who's in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
He was yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. City Council, comments and answers. I'll start on my left.
Does that mean Rick first?
Yes, that's Rick.
That's my right.
Oh, this is the left.
He's not here. So my left, right here. Must be present to God.
Well, first of all, I'm very proud of my son. He asked to apologize for being early. He, he has other duties he has to take care of. And I wanted to thank David, we see, and Susanna for coming, and also all of it, and the rest of y'all for being here. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and staying for the rest of the, the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming and have a super rest of the day.
Thanks, guys, for coming.
And now, mother of the land. Rick?
Thanks, Mayor. I, I just wanna thank council and the, the leadership for allowing me to participate by video today. I'm at the American Indian Science and Engineering Society Leadership Conference. It just happened to overlap with council, so I wanted to be able to participate in this as one of the key leaders of the organization, most of the, participating council. So thanks for my interruptions at inappropriate times and times on this call. Again, a terrific meeting, great reports. Nice to see the trending, and congratulations to Dallas and the work on the water department. No questions, some challenging issues we're working through on, you know, the railroads and others, but I think council and the city are taking the right steps to deal with those difficult issues. It'll be very interesting to see what comes back on the, on the gay evening ordinance. So I'm glad we got first reading out there, and I'm sure there'll be lots of discussion at our next meeting on that subject. So, thanks very much.
Thanks, sir. Want to thank everybody. This evening, we had a lot of good discussion, a lot, lot of things on the agenda. We covered it all, the good questions, good discussion on this thing, which is what council's supposed to do. So thank you all very much, and y'all have a good evening.